Okay, I'm sorry.[3.29][3.29](laughter) We're going to begin this meeting of the Planning and Development Committee. This is a committee meeting. Committee meetings by definition are work sessions of council. Even though this is the Planning and Development Committee, the members are Mr. Tamke, Mrs. Bain, and myself. We almost always operate as a committee of the whole, so we'll all be joining in this discussion. But it will essentially be a discussion among us. I've given you copies of the two proposed ordinances that we're going to be discussing. And we -- these are basic ordinances. An ordinance is always written in the positive mode, so we're -- the language is for approval. It needs to be this way so that we can move it through our three readings, and then council will vote on this. Over the past six months, we've had at least two public hearings. We've received written comments from many of you, personal visits, phone calls, emails. We've talked to the developers several times. We've sent them many lists of questions and concerns to which they've responded. We've gathered all that information. We feel now it is time for us to develop an ordinance which will move through the three readings of council and come to a vote probably sometime in November. These basic proposed ordinances that you might have gotten copies of are our starting point. We might amend those. We will certainly add conditions. Many of your concerns have suggested to us conditions that need to be added to these. So that will be our ongoing discussion. I'm sure we will have some questions for the developers since they're the ones intimately involved with the details, so we may be asking questions of them. There may be opportunities later on for particular questions from an audience member, but not for statements. So we are about to begin this work session. First of all, just as we came on the air, there was some discussion about language in our revised ordinance that we probably want to go back to the original.
Could you ask them to turn off their cellphones, please?
Thank you. Reminder to please turn off your cellphones.
Right now?
Not -- yeah, it does interfere with electronics. And actually, last night at council, it was one of our own people who forgot to turn it off, twice. So, anyway. The language in this most recent copy that I've given you begins with "whereas on April 7th, the Athens City Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the final plat," well, there really wasn't a final plat at that time. So the previous language, Debbie, I threw away my old one.
The memo from the Planning Commission says, "In the matter of National Church Residences, request for approval of a planned unit development."
Okay. Request -- recommend approval of a planned unit development. Okay. Yeah. Does that make more sense at this time? Okay, we'll just change that in the "whereas's."
And in the title.
And in the title. The title, it sounds good. We don't have a final plat, though.
Right. Okay. Okay, so we're just changing that from "final plat" to approving a planned unit development. So what is included in this first ordinance is Section 1. Planning Commission recommends approval with the following variance. Variance from code Section 23.11, Table B, to permit 169 parking spaces for 151 units where a total of 302 spaces are required. And an acknowledgment that 50 of these spaces shall be reserved for employee parking.
So Jim, we don't have a final plat, so what are we going to do in that section? I mean, because this is the legal meat of it.
I have a suggestion.
Okay.
For all three places, the title, the whereas, and in Section 1. It also is not truly a CCRC, so I would recommend that we strike "final plat" of the continuing care retirement community and make it read "the planned unit development proposed by National Church Residences."
And we reference in there 2311?
Mm-hmm.
And 2311 is pretty emphatic in what would be included. Oh, 23912, 23. 290924, okay. Jumping ahead. 24.
Yeah. That's a different section.
Oh, that just refers to action by council. It doesn't say what the final plat is.
Okay.
Okay.
So is that what you're speaking of, or the parking variance?
No, I still -- I'm still concerned about if that would -- well, okay. We can talk about that later, the larger question.
Okay, I'm kind of going -- yes, okay. Kind of going through in this order, and then we'll talk about what's left out, what needs to be included, whatever. So the parking variance, with regards to the parking variance. Concerns, comments? We've heard from the developer that this is a standard formula for retirement centers. They're not necessary to have as many parking spaces as we require for other residential And that's how we arrived at this number. Paul?
I think I asked the question a while back. Do we require 3/4 of a vote for approving any type of plat with variances? I thought that was in our present subdivision codes.
Yes, it is.
So we require 3/4 vote for any plat with variances?
No. If we change the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
It's a different section.
If we change the recommendation of the Planning Commission that requires a supermajority, 3/4 of council.
If we approve.
If we -- if there is -- if this application was made before we changed that language, from this day forward, anything that requires a variance requires a supermajority. Debbie?
I think that we just changed the number. It went -- and there were two different sections that referred to that. One refers to if we make any changes from the Planning Commission recommendation, and one referred in another section to variances. And maybe we need to have a copy of the codebook out here.
And we went from 6 to 5, or 5 to 6.
And that was in the code before, so it's not changed at all. If we ever change the final plat, we have to -- I mean, that's not new. What was new in this was the requirement for modifications to be also ratified by 3/4s. And the one -- so I think it's two places, basically. So 210924 is not new, and we've always required a supermajority for modification of the final plat. But there's another place.
And I forget where that is.
Well, Carol went for the book, so here we are.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, but no. Since this has a variance in it, you're asking, does it need a supermajority? The answer to that is no. The application was made prior -- the application was made and received and prior to our change in the language. Oh.
You're in charge.
Actually, Debbie's working over there. She wrote it.
That's in 210908.
Prior to that, 210908?
Mm-hmm. Which refers to lot area and width, lot area per dwelling unit, more than one building, and all other standards of a residential district. Those are the things that are under that.
Mm-hmm.
So as you say, it's old business, as you see it?
As the law director.
Interprets it for us.
Interpretes it for us.
But we're just seeing it now. We're seeing it after the code was changed. Are you talking about the original petition to Planning Commission?
Absolutely, yeah.
So that's where everything starts?
Yes. That's the opinion of the law director.
Okay.
Are you asking, Jim, that we -- you want to know about -- I mean, do you want us to start fussing over the numbers? Like, should it be 100 and, you know? Should it be 170 instead of 169? Or are you saying, we need a parking -- we need to have this in here because to modify it, if we're going to modify the recommendation of Planning Commission, then you need to have more than a supermajority? Is that where we are? So what you've done, the baseline is what the recommendation was?
This is the baseline, yes. And I'm asking if there's a problem with that, do we want to change that? Again, we've heard explanation of how this number came about.
I'm pretty persuaded if it's going to stay in this use, if it goes forward, because of what I've heard from the developers about the average age of the person entering, the number -- you know, and they stay, average residence time, two years, and, you know, that kind of thing on. And so it doesn't seem to me it's a big problem. The problem would come up for the neighbors and for others if it would not -- if it would go from this use to another use, so.
I believe that we have a way of dealing with that yet to come.
Okay. But, you know, I'm persuaded by what they've said, and the number of visitors, they said pathetically small.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
And so, you know, that was.
And we've talked about subsequent use two or three times, should that happen.
Right, so.
All right.
I also bought into the figures that they were giving us in terms of typical parking usage for a similar facility. Also share Nancy's concern of if it were ever to revert to another use. One of the reasons that I am comfortable with it is I'm more comfortable with the idea of a little less parking for a facility like this than I am using more of the green space to cover it up with additional parking, which obviously there's room. They could pave over some more if that was what was required. But I would rather see more green in there than less, and I think it's adequate for.
Paul?
I have problems with it, from start to finish. I don't buy into what they're saying. I know I've spent, not this month, but the month previous to the zoning board, with two variances for parking on households. So therefore, and which were not granted because they're saying, well, we're renting students who do not have cars, so why don't you give me a variance to Table B and 2311? So I think we'd just be doing a great example so the citizens can follow along and go up at the zoning board appeals and get granted variances for parking. We're setting the standard.
Carol?
I don't agree that it sets a standard at all. This is a different type of facility and clearly does not have the same demand for parking.
It's my -- I think the committee is in agreement.
Okay, so we're --
Before we leave Section 1, could we change the one thing? Title 1, Section 2109, 12, 18, and 20. Because those are the places that actually speak to what is required in an application.
I'm sorry, 2109, 12 through?
12, 18, and 20. Those are the places to talk about what we need to know.
Okay.
But we don't want to grant a variance from.
We're not granting a variance.
Okay. Because Section 1 is speaking to that parking variance.
Mm-hmm. One single variance, variance for parking. We haven't heard from Debbie. Do you have an opinion?
I think that the study they did about parking is fine if it remains in that use.
Okay, so we'll deal with that later. So we changed the section designation. Section 2, the continuing care, we're changing that to planning unit development proposed. Chuff implied with all Planning Commission requirements.
And so what we should do is attach those as part of the record.
Mm-hmm.
And so we need to have all of that.
Like an exhibit, exhibit 1 or something.
All staffed there.
Yeah. Okay.
Every single communication with -- in chronological order, in fact.
Fine.
Reverse.
We need an index.
Well, we're going to have a very thick book this year, I think.
Okay. So that takes care of the proposed language from the Planning Commission. Now, I know that there are concerns among council members and concerns that have been expressed by citizens that we might want to address further now. And some of those might be, Mr. Tankey.
I was just going to ask, there's a set of conditions that indicate that have been approved by the law director. It had the railroad berm, the buffer by the neighborhoods that's connected to the bike path. How do we incorporate those items? Are those the items you're talking about? These are additional items.
And that was the beginning of the list, wasn't it? Because I thought we were going to add to it, at least.
Okay, that's where we are now, and we intend to incorporate those here in some fashion.
Yes, exactly. That's the beginning of the list.
Section, it'd be like Section 3, probably. And then Section 4 would be the typical, the ordinances enforce the effect at the earliest moment. So then we would have a section that would have conditions. Is that what we envisioned?
I have the list last night.
This was staple.
I read that list somewhere.
That's what we did. I passed that last night.
Do you have one from the law director?
I'll take a copy.
Thank you.
Talk amongst yourselves. Okay.
Time out.
Let's go to the question with the plat.
Well, I don't know if that's necessarily a condition, but around the requirements for an application, that question?
About our conditions, yes. I think what we had discussed was we would ask for a final set of drawings that we would have recorded at the courthouse, along with probably copies of this ordinance.
And as long as we're doing that, I would like to have the clerk or president of council or both go over and make sure our requirements are met on those plans, and that they would be filed before development would begin. And that they would include everything in Article, everything requested, because, you know, quite frankly, I am concerned that when Campus Edge comes back, we'll lose our edge to ask them to protect property in that vicinity. And it's okay, I guess, when it's not in your neighborhood. But when we look at the bigger picture, we want to have the materials that are included in those three areas, in 12, 18, and 20. And so that would come back, much in the manner of the ill-fated University Estates plat and -- Bond, thank you. Can't even think of the word. So.
Okay. Go ahead.
May I speak to that? I think there's been some disagreement about what's actually required to be filed when an application comes through the planning process. And it seems very clear to me, reading the code in 210918, Final Plan Application Requirements, it says, the last sentence of the paragraph is, "At a minimum, the application shall contain the following information." And that's followed by the section that includes the engineering feasibility studies, the drainage, any -- the nature and extent of earthwork required for site preparation and development. All of the information that we have requested at different hearings and work sessions that we've had as a council really is required by our city code to be filed at the time of the final application, when that goes to the Planning Commission. And the response that we've gotten for many of those requests for information is that that information will be provided after approval is granted. And I'm deeply concerned about that, not only for this project, but for the precedent that it sets that allows the Planning Commission to waive the requirements of Athens City Code. And it feels -- it just feels like a dangerous precedent to me. And I have a copy of an article that some constituents sent that seems relevant about a project that NCR worked on in Canton, Michigan. And on the back of that, I highlighted a sentence. It's about a building that had to be evacuated because it was structurally unsound. And at the end of the article, Patrick Higgins was quoted as saying, "This is extremely strange. This passed all municipal and state inspections. We're wondering how it got through the approval process without anyone finding out about the problems." And that worries me a lot when we are being instructed to approve a project that has not submitted complete information.
I was not at the Planning Commission, so I don't know if they did actually take a vote to waive all these informations at the Planning Commission level. No drainage, plat approval, engineering studies.
I don't believe they waived it. I believe they delayed it. They said that this could happen later, and as long as these conditions were met to the approval of the administration, that they were okay with it. So they didn't waive those. They just, they said that they, as we've heard them say, they could be done later.
So that was a vote taken, a motion of vote, like we do?
Probably not.
Probably not.
I don't.
I don't think it works quite as.
Quite that way. It's more consensus.
But that's, that was the effect of it.
They just brought it to me.
And I understand and agree with what you're saying, Debbie. The law director's opinion recommendation on this is that these items are the purview of the Planning Commission, and they dealt with it in that manner. That was their, that was their manner of dealing with it. We may find that disturbing and not sufficient, and so we may want to change the code. But with respect to this, I don't know whether we can go back and change that decision of theirs.
Well, I would respectfully disagree with the law director. I don't think there's any ambiguity in a statement that the minimum requirement that those documents shall be submitted.
Shell's pretty emphatic. And I know you have a bit of a problem here.
Have we?
I mean, we don't -- the law director has said it, but.
Yeah.
Probably because he gave advice to them that they could do it.
If -- what?
Where will it end?
What date language are you looking at? Is that something that, is that the language we just updated, or was that always there?
No, that's in the older version as well.
Okay.
And it uses the word shell.
It was 210917, I think, at that time.
At that time?
Oh, no, it was still 18.
I mean, and that's to protect all people, the developers and the people around it. And it's disturbing because I think we have Campus Edge, Copper Beach, and a whole series of other things coming down the chute.
I don't disagree.
No, I know you don't.
In this --
Did you pass it a second?
Okay. In this case, again, as I explained earlier, we're crafting an ordinance which we will bring up to a vote. And if you're uncomfortable with what's happened, then cast your vote. But what we, what I want to do now is add a list of conditions that we think are going to compensate maybe for what we see as an oversight. One of which is asking for the final building plans, including, you just asked me to make sure that they include all the requirements that are included in that Planning Commission Not only would that, and it would be necessary before construction began, which again is what I heard the developers say they would do, but this will document it. But I think there were other concerns that we had also.
I just, I think it needs to be stated one more time, the precedent is very troublesome for people who live in the rest of the city, because the next time it might be next to them, and the neighbors have no input at this point unless we bring it back to us and look at the final plan. But we've already been down that road, and there's a lot of work that was not done. Okay, let's add some things to the list.
Please.
Number one, no moving the sewer line any way, shape, or form. We had one example of that in town, and the outcome was not good. Sewerage in the Maritide Pond, among other things.
Okay.
Okay, and that has to be part of this, absolutely. And we could all sign off, and you could take a vote on each of these and see if they go up or down in terms of additions. I mean, that would be an appropriate way probably to do this, where you would go through and work on each of them and see if you have a supermajority.
Okay, let's make our list first.
Okay.
These are, these don't require a supermajority.
Okay.
Because these are not.
These are conditions?
These are conditions that we're adding. They're not changing any recommendation of the Planning Commission. We're just, we're simply adding to that, so.
Well, continuing on then, as long as I was.
Continuing in that.
Yeah, I had, remember, I took the money and gave Scott Dunsey a couple hundred dollars and said, "Do a GIS," because I'm tired of listening about 16 acres. And he actually came up with kind of the core area that's available for development is about 4 some point 3 acres. In the process of doing this, I looked at Leonard Sawyer's map, which is the major map, and I noticed that there is a discrepancy where the old railroad tracks were with the right-of-way. And I'd like our right-of-way, as it exists, from the 1970 development of the new riverbed to be respected. I mean, in other words, that's about a 40-foot, somewhere between a 35 and 40-foot right-of-way. And then the setbacks are on top of that.
You're talking about the Morris Avenue right-of-way?
No, I'm not talking about the Morris Avenue. I'm talking about the Stimson Avenue right-of-way.
Oh, okay.
That's the next item. Yeah, because, yes, because we do have, we do have quite a big right-of-way. We don't have beyond the old railroad right-of-way. We have virtually none. But when the highway, ODOT finished up, they gave that. And with the Stimson Avenue Bridge, we have a wider right-of-way there. And so I would not want to see any intrusion into that. Another thing I'd like to add is that although there have been ample flood studies of a variety and with the classical reality that's associated with those, the 100-year flood plane, which almost no one understands. But I would like to make sure that we use, in the elevations, the existing 1980, which is part of the law, numbers. And so that, and that's already on the books. And so the upgrades have not been adopted, just as we haven't adopted the 3/4s majority. So we'll have it that way on this one, too, okay?
Can we ask them?
Well, I mean, it doesn't really matter what the engineer thinks, although he's a bright and shiny guy, but what I want, and we can ask him, too, but I mean, I do think the law that's on the books says we're using 1980 rigs. And the law director, remember, to the two of us, affirmed that, didn't he? When we were sitting here? Yes, he said that was, I mean, so we're not about to change it just for this, are we?
Well, we would, we would have to adopt. Your point is we haven't done that yet.
Right, exactly.
And I don't know that we're about to.
No, I don't think so. Okay.
Basically, so the condition is we'll conform to the law.
Of 1980.
Well, I mean, no, it's the law of the city until we change it. Right?
I just wanted to ding it on 80.
Well, I mean, it is what it is, I mean, right?
Well, it depends who's reading it.
Now, I've, again, okay, I'm not arguing to not have it in there. I'm just trying to clarify what the situation is at this moment, that we have not.
I'm about ready to stop, but I've had the, I've had the Red Cross. It seems that, I know that the plans have changed, and I have no firm understanding of how they've changed, because I haven't looked at them chronologically. I'm sure when we have it, it'll be all clear to us. But I do think the Red Cross is extremely important, and I would like to make sure that they are guaranteed an entrance into that facility, that they have. And the setbacks are already included, because you have some already. And I'll let Carol, Carol and I were talking about something.
Actually, there were two or three things that concerned me. I've been reading the Ohio Flood Plan Regulation Criteria and looking at flood hazard areas. And a couple of things that came to mind is there's been a lot of discussion about nursing facilities to begin with, and that's one of the things that's recommended not to have in a flood hazard area. So I am suggesting that the developers take that off the table totally. I know that we've had that conversation, and that there's no nursing facilities in the first phase, and it was sort of like, maybe someday that might be possible. But I'm suggesting that this is not a good location for that to ever happen, and that perhaps that should not even be considered. The second, what was the second thing?
Evacuation.
Evacuation plan, hello. Definitely feel that an evacuation plan is necessary before anyone ever lives there. And I certainly think that that includes being sure that all evacuation routes are above the flood level, at least 100-year, probably more like the 500-year, to be sure that there are safe evacuation routes. I see the whole project, the concerns on two levels. One of the concerns is the people who would live there, the facility itself, that it is quality and safe and a good home for those people. And the other, of course, is the impact on the residents that have already lived there. The third thing that I wanted to ask of the developers, and I don't, I'm hitting you cold with this, and I don't know if you can answer it directly, but there's been a lot of discussion and fear and concern with neighbors concerning displacement of water and where it goes. And when I was reading these flood plan regulations, one of the things that it addresses, and just backing up a little bit, I found that most of these plans answer to a higher level of regulation than we do in the city, that you have gone beyond our requirements and have actually addressed most of the recommended higher standards that are statewide. But this displacement thing concerns me a little. Where is the water supposed to go that, from the area that you had filled to build the facility? Is there a specific answer to that? And, you know, in terms of planning to have that water displacement taken care of, other than in the neighbor's yards?
Could I, just one quick, the condition, the one condition I have is that the fill for the property be taken from the floodplain. That answers that question.
And so that would.
Yes.
Address the whole question, the cut and fill.
In my opinion, and it's actually a part of the model, or it's part, it's a recommended remedy in that particular book that I think you're looking at. And I, my intention is not to say it needs to be taken from the site, because then that begins to, you know, then you've, you've sort of degraded, you know. Your argument about paving applies to a hole in the ground or a retaining pond as well. So my, I would like to suggest a wide, you know, a wider source of fill.
Right.
But the whole idea is that the water displacement then is minimized, because I assume if there's going to be high water, there's not going to be high water at that block. There's going to be high water over a broader period, over a broader area, and that, so that the fill needs to come from somewhere else. And we need to, I mean, that, and that needs, and I recognize that that's not a trivial matter, but I think, I mean, the spirit of it is, to try to minimize displacement water, which if I could characterize the feedback that I perceive, that's a theme. And so I think it's our obligation to try to realistically address that in a way that, you know, allows the developer to.
And to help the folks that live down there understand.
To me, the answer is, it may not be a perfect one, but that's, that's the, that's the condition that I would want to place on the bill of particulars here.
And the fill that would be taken from there is adequate fill for the.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I guess, I don't know that I need to say that. I mean, inadequate fill's not too good of a business practice, so I'm not sure.
But isn't the spirit of this that we would not be doing the sort of, I don't want to put a person's name on it, but the sort of, take the flood zone and dump it on the fringe? We don't want that, the hallmark approach at all, do we? I mean, when you talk about the strategy you've just mentioned, that would be a classical way of doing it. So you're talking about dredging.
Well, it would be, I don't know how classic, I mean, I know what you mean. I know, yeah, we're together.
Okay.
That's why I said.
Because we want the bike path.
If you define it as the site, then you pretty well said that's probably what's going to happen. So let's not define it that way.
But you're going to the wider site.
Let's have a wider, and we could go back to the 1980 map and put some reference points on it and say, here's where it needs to come from.
Right, it troubles me a little bit, just from the, I mean, not, not from the flooding point of view, but I do, I am concerned that maybe the soil there isn't adequate to the task of supporting the building.
And that was, that was.
I think that's where we're going.
Yeah.
Could I ask?
Okay. But I mean, I think it's a good point, although there's some stones that ODOT's put there from the landslide that might be better. I think they're available.
Carol had asked for a response from you all. Could you maybe respond quickly to that?
I'll make one quick response to the nursing bed issue.
Okay.
The other issues that you brought up, certainly no problem. I think that it would still be our desire to have the capacity, and we understand that you may have a different viewpoint, that to have the capacity to have nursing beds in the future, given your other stipulations for how the site would need to be built up, and a very detailed evacuation plan, I guess, it would be our desire that we still have the capacity to do that, but that's, I think, obviously, your call to.
Right, in the state standards, it just recommends that in a flood hazard area like that, that that is one of the suggested prohibited uses.
And we could add an addendum and say that many of the neighbors were concerned about, you know, maybe if there's three policemen on any given time, you know, what happens to the kids at ease versus the hospital? And, you know, how many buses do we have? And, you know, maybe an evacuation plan that doesn't strain the existing resource base is probably already committed.
Yes, sir.
Just to touch on the matter of the fill and the location, I guess, yeah, the location as to where the fill would come from, the desire would be, and as it is on just about any development site, that there is a net zero.
Right.
Of soil brought in or taken out. And down to, you know, the last spoonful of dirt, you can never guarantee that's going to happen. But again, the preferred alternative would be to take any fill needed for the buildings, which is fairly inconsequential when looked at the overall floodplain in that area. Again, all the fill would come from the site itself. And if then, the desire from council would be that it come from a larger area, but still within the floodplain, I don't think there would be a problem with that. Anything else I can address while I'm up here for you?
Not, not right now, thank you.
Okay.
I think we've just touched on another condition that we've discussed about stormwater runoff plan. Stormwater management, I guess. That was your one shot, right?
That's it. Until, until I think of something else.
Paul, you looking thoughtful, or just?
More disgusted, but that's okay. Are we approving a plat? We're not approving a plat. Are we approving a plan, unit development? We don't have a plan. So what conditions do I want to put to something like this? I'm up here because of University Commons, which is a great place if you want to murder somebody. We still have an unsolved murder there. And at this point, they promised everything to us. That's why I'm up here. That's why I spent 10 years in the peanut gallery because of that. And I don't see the shell, the minimum requirements are not being met. So I don't know why I'd add anything, because it's just like one of those movies, say anything? It's a say anything. What was that quote? I don't know how it got past all the government regulations. Well, we're watching it now. So I'm not, there's nothing I can add to this, you know? Dirigibles in case of evacuations, you know?
Actually, what we're doing is getting it to a point so you can vote on it.
Yes, I know. That's why there's nothing more for me to add.
However, I think you did mention earlier that you want to be assured that the Morris Avenue entryway was gated for emergency zone.
Just like the no left turns on the University Courtyard, just like the gated area on West State Street for University Commons. Yes.
So on that list, you might say vegetative buffer? On the second one that you have there?
Vegetative.
Vegetative, yeah.
Buffer.
I saw it there on the second floor.
Carol, anything else?
Not at the moment.
Debbie?
I think a lot of folks know that as the representative of the fourth ward, many of the citizens who are, have concerns about this project have spoken with me about it. And I did, you know, get together with a group of Near East Side residents to meet and talk about what are some possible compromises that would make this project more acceptable to people in the immediate neighborhood. A lot of those things have been talked about already, having an evacuation plan. Well, it's kind of a long list. I think that.
Anything new?
People did want more data about the soil sampling, because the location of the four sites didn't look like it was done in a grid pattern. So there was some concern that the soils may be more problematic than we're already aware of.
That'd be tough.
People wanted more detail on the flood model, including making sure that it's using the correct map that's referenced in city code. There was a desire for a plan for stormwater control during construction, as well as ongoing, so we don't have a lot of sedimentation in the river during the construction process. An exact fill plan on any proposed retaining walls and slopes. We've had, you know, a general statement about what the level of fill is going to be in relation to the floodplain, but a more detailed plan about proposed earthwork, an evacuation plan, that people who go and use the adjacent open space for soccer and frisbee would be able to use the parking lot. What Nancy mentioned about not moving the sewer lines, the possibility of reducing the amount of fill in the parking area, so that we're not bringing everything up to two feet above the 100-year floodplain. Question about buffering. Discussion about making sure there's no impact on the bike path. It really, I forwarded the email list to Jim, so.
Yeah, and that's right here.
There's a question about traffic calming, if there's increased traffic in the neighborhood, ensuring Red Cross access to their building, leaving the existing trees in place along the railroad berm, a possible payment in lieu of taxes for city services, public safety and roads, using some kind of permeable material such as green bricks for parking, and a playground. I think the larger one, which is the first one on the list, is the question of leaving everything east of the drainage structure as open space, as a kind of compromise, rather than having the four cottages to dedicate that part of the land between the drainage structure and the bike path spur, to set that aside as a dedicated park and have some kind of playground equipment to create a space so that if the green space that's left would actually feel accessible and available to people in the neighborhood. Because there was a really strong discussion that remaining green space in between parking areas doesn't really feel like green space where people can go play. It feels like it's someone's yard, and it's right next to a parking lot. So it's what, when we hear discussion about how much of the site is remaining open, it's not necessarily usable open space. So that really was one of the biggest parts of the discussion, was trying to find some kind of compromise so that there's less fill, and therefore, less potential displacement of water, and more usable open space for the neighborhood. So I don't know how other members of council feel about that.
Nancy?
I'd be happy to defer to Carol. I just wanted to underline that Debbie was trying to do something proactive and work out the differences that exist between the neighbors who aren't here, because we told them they weren't going to be talking anyway. And I think it only went so far. It's really a shame that we didn't get a chance to work it out so that everybody would feel good about it. And I think that's the way government works best, and so it's really too bad. Maybe we can still.
We still have discussion.
Some other items, some other.
Yes. Actually, well, I also have a copy of Mr. Higgins' response, and much of what he says is that these conditions are fine, just as they've indicated as we notate them, they just aren't in their plans to do them until we give some indication of whether we're going to approve the project or not. They will be, they're assuring us that they'll meet the condition. So it, so that was the response, and there was some hope that maybe people could meet face to face, and time ran out, but not really. We've still got weeks of discussion to go. Carol?
Actually, I didn't even have my hand up, but I'll say something anyway.
Well, she said she would not.
Oh, she did. It does seem to me that we are being asked to vacate a piece of city property, which is the Morris Avenue right-of-way. And so as a trade, it isn't exactly even, but to trade part of the east end of the project for that Morris Avenue right-of-way, I think could make it much more palatable that we're giving up that piece of right-of-way.
I think that has, merits as an argument. Actually, part of the Planning Commission's recommendation did involve the vacation of the Morris Avenue right-of-way.
Right.
We've, with the advice of the law director, we've taken that out and made it a separate ordinance that we'll talk about shortly, because it's going to require, it has some other requirements involved there. And, but I think that bringing that up now, I think we probably clearly want to talk about it during that discussion.
And just to underline what Carol says, you know, you start thinking about the position there and how having that area as, you could have a couple of soccer fields, and you could have a much better. and you could have a much better locate, a much better facility for use, for substitution.
It would be adjacent and probably part of, we have parkland there. And this is immediately adjacent to it. As a joint, it would certainly offer more opportunities. You're right. I think it's big enough for a soccer field plus other stuff.
We have 3.2 acres there in front of the library. And it certainly would, you know, make a nice area there that would be very much a community area.
Yeah, very good public space.
And one of the things that people talked about is that area that's between the library and the river is more appropriate to be left completely open, particularly because of the library's amphitheater being right there. That that wouldn't necessarily be a good location for a playground on the part of the land that the city currently owns. Just because there could be a conflict between the different kinds of activities. So if that area were left open for frisbee and soccer and things like that, that the space between the drainage structure and the bike paths for, might be more appropriate for a playground.
We trust the developers are listening?
I think they are. Again, again, we're going to talk about the vacation separately in a moment. Are there any other conditions we would want to add?
I'm a bit concerned, and I'll just add this, speaking as a daughter. And I would like to see for that drainage ditch, given the rising and falling of water, I wish, I wish we could require a fence at least on the side.
It does get very scary, doesn't it?
It does sound very scary to me. And I wouldn't want someone saying, "You were on council when they did that, blah, blah, blah." So I think that's another one.
Where would you want the fence?
On the east side, around the, yeah, right on that side of that. Because it is pretty, I mean, first of all, there's a, maybe the bike path, go by it and they could landscape it. But some way to stop people from wandering.
Because way before there's a flood event, that fills up and becomes a very deep body of water. Okay, good idea. Let me just note quickly what I've jotted down. First of all, a final set of building plans to be filed before development begins to address all aspects of Code 2109, 12, 18 and 20. This set of plans would be recorded at the courthouse as, similarly to a final plat. No movement of sewer lines. Respect the Stimson Avenue right-of-way, which may not have been fully investigated. And no encroachment on that.
That's just for a visual.
More information about the flood studies, make sure that we're following the 1980 regulations. Assure the Red Cross of access to their property. Must have an evacuation plan before residents move in. The evacuation plan, have to take into account the resources that we as a city have available. All fill should be taken from the neighboring floodplain or from on-site. A plan for stormwater management, both during construction and once the site is developed. Any Morris Avenue entrance shall be gated for emergency use only. Maintain vegetative buffers on the edge of the property. More information about the soil study. Complete plan, a complete fill plan with information on all slopes that will be developed. Some promise of recreational users, access to the parking lot. No impact to the bike path, fence the drainage ditch. And Carol's suggestion of nursing care, this site might not be a good idea. Anything else that we've overlooked?
I think since we've, I'm thinking about the evacuation plan. Since we've collaborated in the county with a natural hazard mitigation study that kind of informs what we're going to do in the case of a natural disaster. I think the plan ought to go to the Athens County EMA, the county entity that we're collaborating with on issues related to evacuation and disaster. So that way. Because we don't want to, since we may have claims on available resources, if you can sort of think about what you have to do if you have a flood. You want to command, you want to get a hold of resources that just might be available. And so they would need to know what the plan was. So we just follow them.
Can't all use the same bus?
Right. You can't all get on the same bus. At the same time.
At the same time. Will not work.
There were also the other three that were on that initial list that you had typed up. The railroad berm, the vegetative buffer and the bike path connector.
Oh, bike path connector.
And is there a sidewalk on that side now?
No.
Stimson Avenue?
No.
No, it stops at the, stops at the railroad tracks.
Let's add a sidewalk. Even if we do it. Oh, I didn't say that. Sorry, Jim. Forget I said that. It's only took 10 years to do Ohio Avenue.
I don't think Paul has enough patience for us to turn to another sidewalk. Let's get Ohio done.
But I do think that we need a sidewalk there and it's a relatively small matter in the midst of all the concrete being poured.
Okay.
Jim, I guess I have one other question. It sounded like there was a significant degree of support for the idea of leaving that additional green space. So is that something we talk about as a condition or is there another way we handle that?
And it looks to me like everything that we've talked about, for the most part, are things that would be ordinarily expected. You know, cost of doing business. Really, that little trade is the only thing that we've suggested that would cost them appreciably more funding, whatever. And what it does is, it takes the cost off of us of giving up city land and puts it on them. But I, I mean, just in looking through this list, there are not a lot of high-cost things that we're asking them to do that would put the whole project out of the ballpark.
Correct. Nor are there things here, very few things that we're asking them to do that they wouldn't already do. We're just saying we wish they, we had the information before this point, so.
Why don't we, I guess I'm, pardon me, but I'm thinking that since the drawing that we looked at with the four cottages did not envision the development of a park, that we let, let that inform a change. Because I guess I'm, I'm struck by the elegance of the trade, but I want to make, but I'm also, but I also understand that the cottages are there for a reason. The cottages were there because of a plan that was thoughtfully put together. People might not agree on the outcome of the plan, but the plan had some thoughtfulness put into it. So I'm thinking if you're going to add, if we add a park, let's let, let's let some creativity happen and see if we could not find compatibility. Instead of sort of looking at it and going, well, gee, it would sit in the middle of a parking lot. Well, it might not be a parking lot. Because I'm thinking, you know, if I were going to, it's seductive to go down this road, but I'll go anyway. If I were going to live in that cottage, I might like to see it. I mean, that might add to the, to the standard, to the living element there if there were a park there. I mean, some people don't like parks, but, so I'm thinking, let's let them have a shot at doing the park, but not say, get rid of the cottages. I may be bummed myself on that.
You may be.
Huh?
You may be.
That's all right. I've been there before.
So have I.
I think an excellent example of a development engineered park is the one up in Oakmont area. It's a very nice park that they put in for, was it phase one or two of Oakmont? They parked there for that subdivision.
He's commenting on the lack of the parks.
Well, no, there's a park there.
Well, there's parkland.
But it's, if they just understood how good it was at open spaces, buffering the upper end. It's good. I tell you, Paul. Don't underestimate it.
Shall we list it as a condition of approval? Shall we talk about it? Since we're talking about it essentially as a trade for the right-of-way, I thought we, if we were going to include it, we'd include it in the discussion of the second ordinance.
Makes sense. And they can mull it over.
They can decide if they want the Morris Avenue right-of-way in exchange, basically. It's a, as Carol stated. Is that okay?
The only concern I have is that this ordinance states approval of the plan as it was recommended from the planning commission. So if we're wanting to change that, I think we need to say that in this ordinance.
Well, in following that thought, we are changing the plan. We would be requiring a plan, change of the plan as recommended by the planning commission. So we'd certainly be looking at a supermajority for that particular item, which might throw it for the whole thing. I don't know. It's definitely, it's, as I see it, it's a change from the plans as submitted. The planning commission is saying, recommending that we approve the plans as submitted. And those plans include those cottages. Again, we can, but it strongly advocates for something like that.
Well, you add the park. You add the park is the condition. And you don't attach the reduction. You don't, unless, I mean, there's two, a couple of different ways you could do it. I mean, you could, you could, we could write it up. And if people are inclined to say that you have to do this sort of trade for the cottages, then you amend it.
We have two soccer fields.
You move to amend it, you put it in. If the amendment passes, it's in. If it doesn't pass, it's out. And there's, you can add it later or take it out. I mean, it's, or you could write it originally to just say, to suggest that a park is provided and add your space, you know, whatever you want to add to the, to the thing. I mean, Paul's decided that one ski lift is enough, so you probably wouldn't want to add one of those. But you might delineate the types of equipment or something if you were interested in the park with a certain level of amenities and dictate those.
And the, earlier on, the citizens had suggested that the right-of-way would make a fine open space for their use. And so I sort of rolled my eyes when they said that to me various times, but...
Long, skinny.
Sixty feet. They could do a soccer, possibly a couple of soccer fields.
I guess.
For the few league. I don't know. I don't think we want to come to that. I think you, maybe the developers heard what we have to say.
Mr. Barati?
We've both been through a number of planning and zoning issues over the last 30 years. And the one thing that I learned along the way is that planning is a process of negotiations. And I think that's what we're talking about here. I didn't hear of any conditions here. And I, you know, we've talked about these things that really are outside of anything that we've ever agreed to before. Be it the gating, whether someone believes that we're going to actually gate it or not. It's in the record. We're going to gate Morris Avenue. The vacation, which is the latest subject of the east end of the property. I don't think that it adds a tremendous amount of value to us, and we understand your discussion at this point. And I'm not quite sure that I want to do anything that changes the whole voting structure of this matter. But if you discuss it in a sense of the last bit here, where you spoke of, you know, it's a trade where we don't have to go back for a whole new plan approval, then I think we would be amenable to that. We would take the four cottages off and replace it with a park. It's a sensible consolidation of that entire piece of property. I have a little problem with fences because fences are nothing more than I remember as a kid as something to go around. But, but wait. But there is a safety factor involved here, especially when you consider, number one, an aged population and a young population if you talk about play fields. So I would suggest that if we do have fences, we do put fences maybe 48 inches high and limit it at that. And then together with some plantings around the area of the ditch or whatever we want to call it, the drainage way perhaps is a better term for it. So again, it's a process of negotiations, and I think, negotiation. And I think really that all the things that we've heard here tonight are things that we've agreed to before. And I think you're including them as part of your legislation. I don't see a negative with the park. It almost becomes, for all of us, someone asked about a playground on-site at one point as an intergenerational event space. And so it isn't exactly on our parking lot. It isn't exactly on what we're building on our site. It's next door, and guess what? Some people are going to be looking out the window, watching kids play. So there isn't anything wrong with the idea of a park. I think it's a wonderful idea. And frankly, it simplifies things, but I don't want to change it to the extent that it really modifies the whole voting structure to where it takes us into a supermajority and probably, and could conceivably jeopardize where we end up going. So we need some assurance in that guy. And that's really the whole negotiations piece. We are willing to do this if we are willing, if something else happens. There's one more piece, the whole nursing piece. We're involved in a few nursing homes around the country. And oftentimes what ends up happening is that even in assisted living, certain nursing beds are brought in. And oftentimes, we actually place them on a second story. We actually separate them from our more ambulatory population. So we would place our less ambulatory population on a protected upper floor, in effect. And I think you stated quite well earlier that we've gone well beyond the requirements for actual treatment of our building relative floodplain where we've actually raised it even a little bit further. And while we're on that, we talked about maybe reducing some of the fill. And you got me going. We're talking about reducing some of the fill in the parking lot. That's all well and good, except there's a little regulation that the federal government published that's called Fair Housing Regulations. And ADA, I think most of you know exactly what I'm talking about. And it stipulates fairly critically what we do with cross slopes and slopes in general, especially with aged population. So that's something we really need to consider. But that item really has been addressed by, you know, what we've been talking about. We want to have a zero, a net zero impact at this point. And the evaluation that was provided by EMHNT earlier, not today, but the last time that we were here, talked in terms of what if we didn't consider taking dirt out of the floodplain, the net impact on the surrounding areas, I believe was a fraction of an inch, was a third of an inch or something like that. You have it in your reports. And at this point, what we're saying is, first of all, they're going back and they're going to modify their plans based on the prescribed dated plans that are codified. So that isn't much of an issue at all. And we don't anticipate any increases from that. But it's a moot point from the standpoint that we're taking fills from, really prescribed areas. So again, the whole process of negotiations, the vacation of the land east of the drainage way, the cottages. I mean, that's great. As long as we can agree to do it that way to where we don't really have to modify. And there are all sorts of vehicles, I suppose, that your law director could tell you how to structure it so we can bypass that and not create a voting problem. The Red Cross access, my goodness, I mean, I've said it three or four times in the past. I mean, we've always committed to that. And I'm not going to repeat the other ones because I think we've already committed to all of those previously. And we have no disagreement with, in any respect with any of them. It's good planning. I suppose the only one thing that I'll finish up with is the whole soils issue. We have four test pits. The soils that, you know, as I indicated during our last conversation, the soils that were found are not very good. There are ways to treat soils to make them better soils. I spent three hours today with a soils engineer in my office. There are, in fact, the same engineer who did this evaluation, but on another project. So there are ways to treat soils. But I'm not interested as much in the soils as what I do with the building and how I design my foundation system. I wouldn't have to touch those soils at all if I provided the correct foundation systems. And I don't know, you know, I think everyone understands that I could have deep pilings. I can have deep pilings in grave beams. I can take that soil out. I can replace that soil to the last spoonful. There are a variety of things. I'm not concerned about the soil quality in the site. And I'm not quite sure where that question comes from because we deal with that on every project. All we have right now is a very small cross-section by virtual four tests of what the soil is. All we have right now is a very small cross-section by virtual four tests of what the soil is. What that indicates to me is that when I do take 20 or 30 borons, which is customary for a structure of this type, I'm going to end up with the same results as those four test pits. But I'm going to know exactly what I have at each location, and it isn't going to be very pretty. It's something that we have to deal with. So, thank you.
Just by way of comment, I just, I think that there was quite a bit of concern because the approach was not traditional in terms of, you know, the materials that we got. And I think that there was concern that the site was relatively limited, and we want to make sure that before it got through the vote, the limitations were understood or at least begun.
Yes.
On the beginning of an understanding pathway.
Right.
That's all, I think that's what we were, that's what I was after, because I know till is till, but it's not here, it's not very good.
No, and I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
How was that for diplomacy, aren't I diplomatic?
One reason I had thought to take the discussion regarding the parkland on east of the ditch with the ordinance regarding the vacation of Morris Avenue right-of-way, because I've heard some discussion from council members that they'd like to handle, instead of vacating the right-of-way, they'd like to handle it as we did the land that we allowed the university, that we allowed the library to build on, which was what we called a permanent easement. And that permanent easement had restrictions on it, that it was, it was an easement in perpetuity as long as the library utilized it. And I think that vehicle could allow us the hope that we were concerned about the parking variance, that this right-of-way would be in the name of this retirement center as long as it existed as a retirement center. And by recording our ordinances and the final site plan, that would link that to any future legal activity with regards to sale or use of the site. So that gives us about the only hope that I can see that we have to assure us of that. But if we change it from a vacation to a permanent easement, that is clearly altering the recommendation of the planning commission, so we go to that supermajority thing. So if we're going to, if we have to do a supermajority on this vote, we might as well include something else, I don't know. But, but then again, as Mr. Barati indicated, that would be changes of their plans, so I don't know.
We explored that last night when we were closing, and I thought that they had two contingencies. And so should we not vacate, then they said we should grant a revocable license for use of that, and, you know, and I don't see how they could stipulate that we should do that, but they did do it. And they also said that they would grant a variance on setback. So I don't see that as a supermajority item, but I could be wrong. I mean, I think that they don't have really the right to recommend to us to grant, to vacate the right-of-way.
When you're saying they, you're meaning the planning commission.
The planning commission.
In the planning commission's language, they recommended vacation, but then they gave two alternate, two fallbacks if we didn't recommend, if we didn't do that. That's very unusual for them to do that. They just, generally, a recommendation is a recommendation. And so I tend to agree with you that that language has given a different aspect to this vacation versus easement question, but I guess that's for further consideration by the law director. But with regards to the idea of vacation versus the easement, are there thoughts?
Well, I guess this goes on the list of questions for the law director. The recommendation from the planning commission said that without vacation, they would need a revocable license to permit private parking on the public right-of-way. But in looking at the plans, I think we've all seen that Phase Two has a building on the right-of-way, so I think we would need to see if that even is an option, if we're considering that.
Yeah, I, you can speak to the developers, but I think it is not. I think that.
I don't like the revocable license option, generally.
It's hard to revoke it if there's a building on it.
Well, it's not what we do, well, and that's why we don't usually, I mean, unless, I mean, it's real messy to try to, but we've only done it when the structure's been built, you know, like the situation on the south side where there was a mistake in the survey, and we came back and granted the license because the garage was there already. But I don't know, that's not a very good remedy here. I prefer the, I guess I, you know, I prefer the, you know, the option of the permanent easement, despite the fact that it, because I like the, I like the way it deals with subsequent use.
At least we could, future council, if it came to that, could leverage parking, if they had to.
Yeah, it would allow, it would give them a tool, anyway.
Yes, as compared to total outright vacation.
Yeah.
Not that once the building's there, it's going to be.
Well, it's.
Get your chainsaw out.
It compels the parking, I mean, that's what.
Yeah, that would be the.
That's the concern, is that it compels the parking.
See, we were all just warned too much about the unanticipated consequences. We're all suspicious, right?
Amen.
Amen. Caution, okay.
So, do I hear a consensus, I have no idea from the members of our committee, that we look at the permanent easement question and then leave open some resolution of what might occur with parkland versus cottages for some solution that might be acceptable to both parties? And I think we're, both sides seem to be headed the same direction, but.
We could say it would be our intention to do this if conditions are right, if the planets align properly and the decision is made. And if we don't, then we'll be back to the drawing board.
And I meant to make this comment before. These are proposed ordinances that we hope would come up for first reading next week, but at any point during those readings, they can be amended. So if a citizen is offended by something and wants to talk to one of us and convince us, we can bring, we can try to change that during the process. So this is not, until we have the final vote, none of this is set in stone. This is just, this is a, this is a working session for this committee.
But given the complexity of this issue, I would not want to see a lot of amendments. I mean, I just think that it's.
If we forgot something very important, if we forgot to say, you've got to have electricity to this point.
If we forgot that, then we'll pick it up.
I'd rather, you know, I'd rather us wait a week than to try, we're not very good when we start trying to amend things, sitting around here, I mean, it's.
You bet you are.
Well, we've got to go, there's some clarifying questions.
We've got some clarification and some review by the law director, so I should take that back. I, it probably is not likely that we'll have first reading on Monday, just because it's already Wednesday.
Yeah, the first meeting in November.
And it's all.
The day before Election Day. No, the day, no, it won't be that, will it?
Yes, it will.
It will be, okay. Good. Not that it makes a lot of sense.
Well, there's going to be, we're going to, if you remember, we're going to be, we're going to be doing the budget, so we're going to be together, there will be more meetings than usual in a shorter period of time, an ample opportunity to meet and talk.
And talk, and talk, and talk.
But I guess what I was suggesting is we get it done, put something up that we're at least reasonable with, instead of trying to put something up that we're waiting to hear from somebody and then we have to amend it, because then it really starts to.
Waver off.
Go to hell at that point. Excuse me.
It's one way of putting it.
Go to pot, sorry.
Council members, are there other conditions that you want to discuss, other questions at this point? I'm sorry.
I just need to go home and rack my brain in bed. I don't think there's anything leading us.
Okay. Paul?
So the second one for the vacating is what wordage, what you have here, what you presented to us, is what you're going to end up with?
We're going to change, we're going to change the language to.
So it's not vacating, it's an easement?
To a permanent easement, and whatever other language is necessary to change in that section.
And before this happens, we're looking for some sort of statement from the developer about, I mean, sometime, even to attach to this by the final reading, right?
Yeah, but I'm not putting that in at this moment.
No, but I think it's key. I mean, it's part of the total bundle.
And I think that that's.
And I think they understand it very well. They've been listening.
Carol, you're looking.
Just breathing, just sighing.
So, right now, Paul, the only change we're making is the permanent easement replaces the vacation word, and that will probably cause some other language change in that paragraph.
And the easement is conditional upon the use of the land? Is that what I'm hearing, too?
Yes.
So in other words, it's one of those.
I'm sorry, that language goes into the condition, conditional use of the land. I'm sorry. That's part of the permanent easement language.
I cannot believe it's only eighteen.
Now, I had said that there might be time for some pertinent questions. We really, this is not time for statements regarding your feelings about this, but if you have questions about some of the issues that have been discussed tonight, or short comments about particulars.
Yeah.
Jill?
Yes.
There, because last night, there was a statement made that this was a work session for us, many people were told not to come tonight, that they would not have the opportunity to speak. So I think.
Council committee meetings, if we're talking about vending, the vendors always have an opportunity to speak afterwards, and so.
Right.
I was not going to cut off the comment, I'm just, I'm trying to encourage people that this, it's a very limited.
I'm just saying, a lot of people didn't come tonight who were planning to because of what was said last night.
Yeah. So we could give them an opportunity to speak at the next committee meeting, if they wish, the people that didn't get a chance to talk this time. We don't have to, I don't know. I mean, it's just, we've heard, okay, well, go ahead.
I'm going to, let's try this. If there is something that we've left out, and you can ask us quickly, please raise your hand, Margaret. But you do have to come up to this podium, you know that.
I have a question.
No.
The first question, I'm Margaret Topping. I'm chair of the CCRC for Absence.
And your address, your address?
178 Longview Heights. My first question is, I would like a clarification from, hopefully Jerry Kriat, as to Debbie's statement that we will not be a CCRC. I think the state interpretation at this point would definitely include our original plans. The second question I have is, this business of trading land, the land is not ours, you're negotiating with the university, because that's their land to give us, they had said they would give it to us, but we are not in a position to negotiate it, I do not believe. I would like clarification on that. I also would like Jerry to respond to the nursing, if possible. Carol does not want us to have any nursing. That makes it very difficult, as you know, even in Lindley today, there's 120 days, I believe, of nursing care allowed by the state in assisted living facilities and in people's apartments and so forth. I just want clarification, really, it's three things, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we can, we'll do that.
Well, and I'm referring to nursing beds, designated nursing beds, as opposed to someone coming in, in an assisted living situation or in an apartment as temporary nursing care.
Okay.
It's two different things.
We understood that.
Thank you, that clarifies it for me also.
Right.
Thank you, Margaret. That was very succinct. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to give this in the morning to our clerk of counsel, we'll get it to the law director, he'll review it as quickly as he can, and we'll get it typed up, I'll get it emailed to the people who are on my list, and I hope to say that it would be available by tomorrow afternoon, the listed conditions and the language that we've come up with, if not by then, certainly by Friday, so anybody who needed a copy could contact the clerk and probably get it emailed to them, or you could come by. Not now.
We won't get a law director review.
We won't have a law director review by then.
Just so people understand, it's going to be the dressed-up language of what we said here.
Right, it's our, it's our non-legal language.
Okay.
And we usually go with that until we stumble, right?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's the best we can do.
And so, and that's Mr. Tampe's statement about, it's unlikely that we'll have a finished product ready for next Monday's meeting, is probably true. That was the, that was the, that was a timetable I had envisioned, but I don't think it'll happen, but we'll aim for that anyway. So, in later discussion, the very next discussion, we'll have clarification of Margaret's concerns.
And in general, we've had some discussion with people at the university concerning that swap, so we'd have to.
I think there's some.
Yeah, there is already some understanding.
So, I thank, thank you very much for attending and lending us your attention, and for your participation in this conversation that we've been having for load these many weeks.
Load these many years.
And more to come. Please, please continue talking to us, and.
Talking to Jim. Don't talk to me.
I think that's it. Thank you. Good night.